We'll call this meeting to order.
All rise. Oh, yes, oh, yes, this county commission, Sumner County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Tonight, we have Mr. Stephen Russell, Minister of Old Union Church of Christ, 2505 Hartsfield Pike, Castalian Springs. He's raised in Sumner County. He and his wife Kelly have two daughters, Amelia and Clara May. He's shared with me some of the members of his congregation, and we may need to pray for him as much as he prays for us.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you, brother Russell.
Will you bow to me, please? To the God of heaven and earth, all space and time, things both imaginable and unimaginable, of awesome power that you have let us know, and also of power that is yet to be revealed. God, we praise you, and we love you, and with humility, I invoke your will and your way upon this good assembly tonight. God, I am nothing compared to you, and I pray before an assembly that has no authority except for what you have allowed. We recognize you as the God of all control, of all sovereignty. You are omnipotent, and your reign exists within and without time. When I think of that, Father, I am left amazed and thankful. We are nothing without you, and we give you all glory and praise. To begin this meeting, as always, with a petition for your presence is most appropriate. Father, I am so thankful for that. But I earnestly pray that this is not routine. I pray that this is not a tradition that has become without sincerity. I pray that each and every servant that has been given authority by you to make decisions and to represent people that you have created, I pray that we will with genuine hearts appeal to your guidance and to your strength and not to our own ambition and pride. May each father do their duty with the greatest commandments as their law, to have hearts and minds and souls and strength completely given to you. Father, and with those hearts and minds and souls and strength, may we love you and love the people of this great county. Father, I pray that as decisions are made, as petitions are heard, that we all keep in mind the most important of all things, and that is in you we trust. Father, I'm very much aware that oftentimes we do trust in chariots and princes, but, Father, I pray that you are our refuge, that you are our strength. I thank you for these servants. I really do. I ask that you revive in them tonight and daily their desire to serve. I pray that they look to your son as the model of service, and that each will be willing to destroy their life for the sake of his likeness. Father, focus our eyes and our hearts on you, and may this assembly tonight be a response to that focus. May your spirit move in us. Father, to talk to you is a gift. It is a privilege. Now, I pray that you help us to silence all things that distract, and may what is said in here, may our lives be a response to how you lead us. It's in Christ's name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Kemp, let's check the roll.
Roll calls now open. Each commissioner, please record your presence.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. We have your regular and consent agenda before you. Is there a motion to approve? Some motion made by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Graves. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, hang on one sec. Are you abstaining or saying vote no?
No.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mansfield.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to know if I could request that we add to the agenda tonight a discussion or update about the status of the emergency communications center. I know there's been a lot of reports in the paper lately and kind of a lot of critical life safety issues that have, need to be addressed, and especially with the recent resignation of the director or assistant director, both resigned. And I know that the emergency communications committee was canceled at the last minute of this month, so I would love to have kind of maybe gone to that, but is it possible to hear kind of a direct report from either the chairman of the committee or from the county mayor?
Yes, I think so. Yes, sir.
Great.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir. I have a couple items tonight. The first being with mounting concerns from constituents and citizens that I interact with, I would like to request an add to the agenda resolution condemning the actions of former Sumner County School Board Chairman and current project manager of operations overseeing school construction projects for violating policy by engaging in political activities at the cost of hardworking taxpayers of Sumner County. This resolution would also call on the director of schools to take appropriate disciplinary action up to and including termination based on noncompliance to school board policies surrounding this matter, and I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Mansfield. Since this has not been through a committee, it will require a two-thirds vote to add to the agenda. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
So, we can, Mr. Goode's in the queue.
I can elaborate on the committee process if you would allow me to.
Well, I think it's just, it's just a rule of procedure, Mr. Taylor, that if it hasn't been through a committee, it has to have a two-thirds vote to be added to the agenda.
Yeah. I understand that.
Okay.
There's a reason behind it didn't go through a committee.
Okay. You go ahead. You've got the floor.
Well, I observed the file with the district attorney general. Based on the evidence that was in the file, there may not have been, in his opinion, evidence to bring forth criminal charges, but in my opinion, within the evidence, there was evidence to bring forth disciplinary action engaging in political activity on school board time. I was sick the night of the legislative committee was the reason I was unable to attend that and the budget committee meetings that were held that night.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I think this would be highly inappropriate to a couple of things. Number one, there used to be a policy in this country. Maybe something's happened to it, innocent until proven guilty. Secondly, we have no, we have no say on what the school board does. Thirdly, it was mentioned there was a policy, school board policy, that was violated. That's inaccurate. But what I would like to say to this body is imagine if school board members or the city of Galton or city of Hendersonville started taking votes on how they wanted us to conduct our business. We've never done it in history, I know of. It would be highly inappropriate, and to your point, Mr. Chairman, if anything, it should be brought to a committee and gone through the proper process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Mr. Taylor.
Based on another resolution that's in this agenda tonight, we're encouraging another body of government to do something. That would be the state of Tennessee. We're encouraging them on the sales tax issues. We may not have, we may not go to Galton and tell them how to conduct their business, but I sure would like to sometimes. Anyways, the, whether you're guilty or not, in the file, there's clear evidence of violation. So, I encourage anybody that would like to to set up an appointment with the district attorney general's office and review the file.
Okay.
I may be wrong, but I don't think I am.
Okay.
So, I wouldn't be bringing this forward if I thought I was wrong.
Okay.
So, you know, we speak to sending stuff to other bodies, and this body is a body that we send millions of dollars a year to. So, the constituents either have one of two elected officials to call on to make sure that their money is properly spent. That's either their elected school board member or their elected county commissioner. And when my constituents call on me to address an issue, that's why I'm in this seat.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, I would say most of everything you heard's been inaccurate and inappropriate, and I would echo the fact that we do not dictate what school board policy is and how the director of schools manages his employees. It is true that we sometimes make recommendations to our higher authority because we try to get money or private acts as it relates to the state legislature. To my knowledge, and some people that's been here much longer than me can talk about the times that we've done resolutions as it relates to personnel policy. I don't think it's ever happened. It should go through the proper process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Mr. Foster.
Call the question, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second to call the question? Sorry, doesn't that have a second? So, let's vote on calling the question.
Vote on the call for the question to end debate, whether or not we add it to the agenda, is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Receiving ten affirmative votes, the call for question fails to carry. We're back to whether or not we add the item to the agenda.
Mr. Hinton is next in the queue. Can you hit that button again, Mr. Hinton?
I'd make a motion, we refer this issue to the education committee.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Hinton to refer this matter to the education committee, seconded by Commissioner Goode. Let's vote.
Motion to refer is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. With nineteen affirmative votes, the matter is referred to education committee.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir. I would like to pull 1901-11 from the consent agenda and have it placed under the appropriate committee.
Which, can you say it again, Mr. Taylor? I'm sorry.
1901-11, number six.
Okay.
Down on the consent agenda.
All right. Let's move that to... Yeah, let's move that to budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 1901-11 to budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. All right. Motion has been made and seconded to approve our agenda and consent agenda tonight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Taylor voted no. Commissioner Mo Taylor voted no on our agenda. Your minutes are in your packet. Is there a motion to approve our minutes? Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Echols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have anyone that signed up for public comments?
Anyone wish to sign up that has not already?
Thank you, Ms. Rutherford. Your veterans' report is on your desk. Okay. We'll close comments on the public hearing. Tonight, we have a very special presentation. If we could have Mr. David Withrow come forward. He's going to share with us a special presentation for his Eagle Scout award or recognition.
Good evening. My name is David Withrow. I'm here tonight on behalf of troop 413 in Hendersonville, and I'm going to speak to you briefly about my project and how it relates to Sumner County history. My project oriented around a cemetery down the Saunders Ferry Peninsula. This is a cemetery with several historic figures from the city and the county's history, but it's incredibly dilapidated. And it was actually brought to my attention by Mr. Hyde, who's been my project sponsor. So, I have focused on restoring the cemetery into a state that's a bit more respectful to the inhabitants. This is included: enlisting a tree service to cut down several branches that threaten to destroy the graves, painting the cemetery fence with brushes and rollers, which, believe it or not, is actually a lengthy process, creating a sign for the cemetery, and one of the most enjoyable aspects of the project was actually taking grave rubbings of each stone and compiling each of the inscriptions. We also did short biographies of each inhabitant of the cemetery, and that way, even though the stones are going to weather and those inscriptions will eventually become unreadable, there will be some documentation of what was laid on those stones. So, some of the interesting figures in the cemetery, the most prominent would be Colonel Trigg, and he was a colonel in the Virginia militia. He was actually present at the Battle of Yorktown during the Revolutionary War. So, he's probably the most prominent inhabitant, and his brothers were both colonels in the Virginia militia as well and members of the Virginia House of Representatives. Present in the cemetery as well is a member of the Sanders family, thus the name Saunders Ferry. So, James Sanders, who actually built a historic home near the cemetery, was the deputy of General Daniel Smith, who was commissioned by George Washington to come out and survey the area that is now Hendersonville and the greater Sumner County, and that's how they received some of those land grants. So, those are some of the interesting figures in the cemetery. I've greatly enjoyed the project. It's been interesting getting to have a hands-on experience with some of the history of our community, and I would like to present this booklet with some of the history compiled so that it may be preserved, even though some of the graves will continue to weather. But I would also like to give a thanks to Mr. Hyde for being an incredible mentor and a project sponsor throughout the entire experience, and were it not for him, I very well may not have received my Eagle Scout award. So, with that, I'd like to present this booklet.
So, Mr. Withrow is a senior at Merrill Hite Magnet School.
Yes, sir.
And got a lot of great days ahead of him. We're excited for him as he earns his Eagle Award. And where are you thinking about for school after this?
I'm trying to get to West Point. If not there, then Indiana.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And we will, this will be a gift well received by the Sumner County Archives, and we look forward to seeing all the great things ahead of you, David. So, congratulations. All right. I think Josh is going to come forward at this time for a special presentation. I think Commissioner Graves, if you want to come on up too. I think Commissioner Graves also wanted to add a few words.
Mr. McKee, Ms. Twala, can y'all come on up here?
Come on, Mark.
I've been given the privilege of reading this certificate of recognition into the record for Mr. McKee. I've been with the county for a little less than a year now, and I've had the honor of working with the county board of zoning appeals. They have a very, very complicated job, a very important job, and a very complex job. And Mr. McKee served as the chairman, as the chairman for many years, and did a phenomenal, phenomenal job doing what he does, and it's been a real honor working with you, sir. So, this is certificate of recognition, a resolution honoring Mr. Mark McKee Jr., whereas Mr. Mark McKee Jr. has served as the Sumner County Board of Zoning Appeals since 1977 and has served as chairman since 1994. And whereas a native of Sumner County, Mr. McKee was born and raised in Castalian Springs, where he and his family presently reside. And whereas Mr. McKee, who is a lifelong proud farmer, is devoted to his family and his church, serves as an elder in the Castalian Springs Old Union Church of Christ, and he and his wife Twala are the proud parents of two sons with six grandchildren and nine great-grandchildren. And whereas Mr. Mark McKee has gone above and beyond to serve our county, and has been a friend and a mentor to those many lives he has touched and should be commended and recognized for his contributions and his commitment to his community. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting a regular session on this 28th day of January 2019, that this body does hereby express its appreciation and gratitude for the many years of service and dedication of Mr. Mark McKee Jr. to our county and wishes him the best in all the years to come. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Mr. Mark McKee Jr. Thank you, sir.
Like a motion made by Commissioner Graves, seconded by Commissioner Ring. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And Mr. McKee, on behalf of the planning department here at Sumner County and on behalf of Sumner County generally, if the county executive will allow me to do so, I'd like to present you with this plaque as well, in recognition of Mr. Mark McKee Jr. for his over four decades of service to the citizens of this county as a member and chairman of the Sumner County Board of Zoning Appeals, from your friends at Sumner County Government, January 28, 2019.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I want to say thank goodness to Sumner County to have the honor and privilege that I have had, and I'm living proof you don't get too old to learn, because if you listen, you'll learn something every time I have a meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I just want to say something. I've known this family pretty much all my life, and Mr. McKee, Ms. Twala, they, they all and all the family has been an asset to Castane Springs, Bethpage area, and of course, all of Sumner County. And I really appreciate with a heartfelt thanks for y'all's service and what y'all do in the community, in the farming, the community, the church, and the help, even the other Mark back there. I don't know if it's first, second, third, or fourth. I can't keep up with them, but anyway, third. But anyway, I played football with Mark back there and know him all my life, and they have been a great access to the rural part of the county and all of Sumner County. Thank you.
By the way, Mr. McKee is 90 years young and still serving.
Mr. Kemp is going to read our public notice.
The Sumner County Commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 28, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the county commission chambers of the Sumner County Administration Building at 355 North Belvedere Drive, Galton, Tennessee. At this meeting, a public hearing will be held to discuss a planned unit development amendment for Somerset Downs Phase 7. In 2017, this property was rezoned from residential 1A to low-density residential planned unit development. A development, a developed 28 new single-family home site. This planned amendment will reconfigure 3.63 acre site to allow for a development of four additional home sites. Copy of this notice is on file in the Sumner County Planning and Stormwater Department in Sumner County Administration Building. Anyone having any interest or desire to ask questions concerning this request is invited to attend the meeting.
Commissioner Chris Taylor.
Mr. Kemp, I'd just like to read some things to you real quick, and homeowners within the hollow subdivision have indicated that much of the runoff from the Somerset Downs development appears to be bypassing the stormwater infrastructure that was installed on previous phases. There's an existing detention pond that was part of Phase 5 that was to be completed or developed back in 2014. There's several questions arising around that one pond itself. It doesn't appear that it's completed this time. It doesn't appear that it's capturing the runoff like it's supposed to, and it doesn't appear that it's been done in a timely fashion in relation to some of the other parts of the subdivision. There's also some concerns about some of the detention ponds throughout. County staff actually went out and walked the facilities and walked around it and had those same concerns. And what we, I would like to suggest is that, make a motion that we postpone this for at least one month, allowing the developer to be able to prove that they are, one, they already have the engineering plans. We know that. They've been signed off on by planning. But there's a difference between the engineering plans and actually putting those plans into motion. So, we'd like them to bring back some proof that dirt's being moved. They're doing the things they're supposed to, and that it meets the standards that would at least stop some of the runoff that's been going along, and this would be approved or at least overseen by our planning department.
Okay. So, we're going to refer this for one month?
Yes, sir.
That's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? All right. I think Commissioner Taylor had the second, Christopher Kruger, several others. I see no discussion. All in favor of referring, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. So, 1901-01 has been referred. 1901, our consent agenda is before you. Remember that we moved 1901-11 to the budget report. So, we're looking at the other items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some votes.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Echols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your written reports are on your desk. Let's look. Is there a motion to approve our notaries? Motion made by Commissioner Echols, seconded by Commissioner Gomenden. Let's vote.
Notary applications on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes, all 24 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? The notary applications are unanimously approved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Let's go to our standing committees. Committee on Committees, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee on Committees met in its regularly scheduled meeting, January 28, 2019, 6:30 tonight. First item on your agenda, as you can see, is zoning appeals. We just honored Mr. McKee, who was retiring at age 90. The recommendation with the county executive was Matt Stamper. It was unanimous. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ring. Commissioner Mo Taylor's in the queue.
Chairman, I went before this committee tonight and posed a couple of concerns that I've had and have been posed to me from citizens and constituents. This board is, makes decisions out within the county. They, they decide if, say, Mr. Mansfield wants to put in a bike shop at his garage out in the county. So, we have two recommendations tonight, and what the concerns that the citizens and constituents have is the representation throughout the county. Mr. McGee was from Castalian Springs. Mr. McKee was from Castalian Springs. The other one being replaced is from Gallatin. So everybody that will either be on this committee or is currently on the committee will be from Hendersonville and Gallatin. And we have no representation on the northern end of the county, being Gallatin, Portland, and White House. So I would like to defer that back to the county executive for reconsideration. I so move.
Okay. Motion is made to defer by Commissioner Taylor. Was it Mr. Mansfield's second? All right, let's vote.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to speak to the motion.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman, Commissioner Taylor brought this up at the committee. I remind this body that the county, that these appointments that are before us tonight and specifically this one, are at the pleasure of the county executive, for whomever that may be at the time. A commissioner at the committee brought up these same concerns and it was discussed. And it was also pointed out to Commissioner Taylor that the proper procedure is not only to go through the committee process, but to take his concerns and any recommendation to the county executive. The committee heard all that and voted and it was still unanimous. So I would say we vote no and go with the recommendation.
Yes, sir.
The vote was, I think, three to two, or two to two.
Three. Ms. Denny, what was the vote? Three to extension with abstentions.
I don't think that's correct. I think the extension was on a specific name as it related to Mr. Holt on another position. And the law director can straighten that one out.
All right, do we have the minutes from the meeting?
This one, I'm only thinking, this specific one, Matt Stamper, was unanimous.
Was unanimous, okay.
The next one was the three to two or whatever.
Okay.
I apologize. I was wrong.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hyde.
Ms. Chairman, I know Mr. Stamper and there's no finer person. From what I'm hearing, though, I'm somewhat concerned about the representation of this committee as a whole. I see nothing wrong with just asking the county executive to maybe look at this again and reconsider it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hyde. So let me, as we go to vote, go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
I left out an important part of it. I meant to say it. You know, you should get to speaking and you got in your mind what you're going to say. This isn't personal against any appointment, any person. I mean, it's, you know, it's not a personal thing against any of them. I mean, I know a lot of the guys that are already on there and know of the ones that's going to be appointed. So it's not that, it's just that, you know, it's representation. So I don't want anyone to think that I've got a vendetta against the two people that's being brought forward because that's not the case whatsoever.
Okay, all right.
Chairman, as chair of the committee, I would like to, if the county executive would like to speak to this, recognize a commissioner asked in the committee about a possible referral back to the county executive's office, and the county executive said he had made his decision, it would be the same decision going forward. I don't know if he wants to speak to this matter, but if, Mr. Chairman, if you'd recognize him if he wants to, it might save us a lot of time.
Okay. Mr. Holt, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I was requested by Commissioner to appoint one of these people. The other person is my brother. He is very qualified, he's an engineer, he's retired now. He'd like to serve. I do take exception to what's being said. I don't think this committee will be any less diverse after these appointments than it is today. Well, we have two people basically that have resigned. And, you know, I've told these people that I put their name forward for appointment. It's the will of this body, if you want to turn them down, I respect that, I don't have a problem with that. But, you know, it's about putting qualified people on who are willing to listen to people. One has governmental experience, the other has private industry experience in engineering. And, you know, I'm always open to your suggestions, that's why I did bring one of these people forward as a recommended appointment. But I don't see me changing it. I would appreciate an up or down vote. If you decide not to appoint one of these, then I will go and solicit other candidates to serve in their place. I want you to be aware, we have our planning commission and it is very diverse, it's made up of members all over the county. This is a very small committee, this is five people. We have commissioners and citizens on our planning commission. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. If you'd like to ask any questions, Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. So let me just clarify, we've got a motion to refer to, back to the county executive for reconsideration. So a yes vote on that motion would be to refer it to the county executive for reconsideration. That's what a yes vote would be, and no vote is for us to return and vote on the main motion. Okay? Yes, Ms. Echols?
Are you only a specific person or all the representatives?
Let me ask, Mr. Goode, your motion was for, was just for Mr. Stamper, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, and there were two, several votes on those two candidates. This one was unanimous, the second one, it wasn't the one that was mentioned that had two abstentions.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Goode, for clarifying that. So let's go, the motion again is to vote to refer to the county executive for reconsideration. Voting yes would refer it back to the county executive, voting no would mean we would proceed to the motion that came out of the Committee on Committees. Let's vote.
Motion to refer is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Receiving five affirmative votes, motion to refer fails to carry.
Okay, let's vote. Mr. Kemp, let's put the main, let's put the amendment on the board and we'll vote on it.
We're just, we're voting on...
But that was to refer the, that was to refer the motion, or refer the candidate to the county executive. Now we're voting on Mr. Stamper replacing Mr. McKee. Yes, sir. Give me one second, Mr. Graves. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Graves.
I just got a question about this board zoning appeals. Is the board set up in any certain parts of the county? There's no whether you're in Bethpage, Castalian, or Gallatin?
This one's not set that way, Mr. [inaudible].
But there's no reason, all of them could be from Hendersonville, or Gallatin, or wherever.
The only requirement is they be citizens that do not serve in other capacities. The county commissioner can't be on the board.
Right.
Thank you. So the only requirement is that a, is that they, I'll just repeat it for everybody and it'll be a part of the record, that the only requirement is that they can't be a county commissioner elected to serve on another, on another board. School board member and an elected official. Okay, are we ready, Mr. Kemp? Okay, there's no one else in the queue, let's vote. A yes vote is to approve the county executive's recommendation to add Mr. Stamper to the Board of Zoning Appeals. A vote no is to vote no on the county executive's suggestion.
The vote is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. 20 votes are entered. Anyone not voting, anyone wishing to change your vote? It's approved, 20 affirmative votes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The second recommendation on the zoning board of appeals was for replacement of John Wesley Jones, and that was Macklin Holt. That was the one that was mentioned, it was a three to two vote and discussed in committee, and I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Goode, is there a second? Second made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
I couldn't make the same motion again, but I'm not going to. But I would like to heavily ask that going forward that this be considered because I brought this up during the committee meeting. You know, we have, we have citizens on this board that live within the city limits. Most of these decisions are made out in the county. So I'm not sure that, you know, Westmoreland is going to put me on their zoning board of appeals when I live out in the county, or Gallatin, or Portland, or Hendersonville. So I would like to also take that into consideration with how the citizens live without in the communities where these things are taking place, that those members be represented of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holt.
Ms. Chairman, thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to bring out the point that the majority of this county commission lives inside the city limits. You make decisions for everyone who lives outside the city limits. I could go through here and point out the people who live inside the city limits. So I don't think there's anything sinister or anything that is excluding anyone in the county and is not representing those that these people are appointed to because they know they're serving countywide. I think it's most important that we seek out and we place on committees people who are qualified to do their job and understand the needs of the citizens and actually the regulations involved in the committee that they serve on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Mr. Hyde.
Ms. Chairman, I'm a member of the commission from the 8th district in Hendersonville. And my district happens to represent people from Hendersonville entirely, probably one of the few. I come here and I make decisions for the entire county, Mr. Holt's right. And there's nothing sinister about anything that I do or that any of them would do. But we have it planned here where we are representative of the entire county as a body. And that's all I was speaking of. I think I would just appeal to Mr. Holt, to committees or anyone else, even as a member of Hendersonville, that when we do this, that we look to Oakmont and Portland and Westmoreland and all over the county and make our committees and functioning bodies, sub-bodies of this group as representative as possible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hyde. There's no one else in the queue, let's vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Graves.
I just got a comment, Mr. Hyde brought it up. I don't have a problem if all of them was in Hendersonville. I guess what I do maybe have a concern about is if they're in Hendersonville and John Doe is going to put, I just used Hendersonville, I'm sorry, Gallatin, Hendersonville, or if it's all in Bethpage. But if John Doe is going to put a garage on this, some kind, and it's not zone commercial, is those people that live in a different part of the county, are they going to come out there and look at what they're trying to do? We've had an instance lately in the ZBA that somebody from a different part of the county probably not going to drive up there and look at the problem. Sometimes you can't see stuff from comments or on maps or things like that. So that's really my concern. It's not with Mr. Stamper, Mr. Holt, or any of them. But we need a, maybe it should be in zones. Like one, four or five zones in the county, five zones in the county should, maybe they should, maybe we should look at doing something with that. It's taking one at each zone, even for Mr. Holt's appointments. So that's just a comment I had and a concern.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Ms. Kruger.
Well, I just, we keep talking about especially cities like Hendersonville that represent only city. And I want to point out that that's not necessarily the case. My district has some that is, I'm in Hendersonville and I live in the city of Hendersonville, but I have county in my district as well, that I actually struggle more than most to get service for because there's this constant battle of who it belongs to, city or county. And it's clear on the map, but it's really hard because it's like this little piece of Swiss cheese that's just a piece of the county. So that's hard. And I know Goodlettsville has a lot of county in it as well. So I want to also remind people that just because you're in Goodlettsville or Hendersonville or Gallatin does not mean you're necessarily in the city limits because you're in a mailing address that says one of those three cities on it. And we choose to represent the county as well, so.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Mr. Hind.
I'm sorry.
Go, Mr. Hind can go, and then you can go, Mr. Goode.
This may be out of order, but let's refer the issue to the Legislative Committee. Let's have this discussed, just the things that have been talked about here tonight. Let's have this discussed and see if there isn't some kind of recommendation we can all agree on, how the questions, the protocol to go through when you're selecting people to serve on these kind of committees. Just a discussion. If they come back with nothing, that's what they'll come back with. But I believe it's worth, I believe it's worth some committee doing a study to come with some conclusions to bring to this body.
Can I just clarify, Mr. Hind, are we, are you, can we, can we just bring that to Legislative and still vote on this tonight, or do you want me to refer this appointment?
No, I'm not asking for a referral. I'm just asking that when we finish, this is part of the agenda, that the Legislative Committee will leave here tonight with a mission, and that is to explore these.
I'll make that recommendation to Commissioner Ring, Legislative that we look at, at that process. Mr. Goode.
Ms. Chairman, thank you for the recognition. And I would just point out, I would agree with Mr. Hind, if that is the, but we are following our process. As everyone knows, which will be mentioned again tonight, and every agenda you've ever had and in your minutes, the following months Committee on Committees, what's going to happen, everyone receives. The county executive has always made it known and everyone knows that anyone can make a recommendation for any of these positions. So we are following the protocol we've always followed for our county executive appointment. But if we need to follow it study and the chairman of Legislative wants to bring it up, that's fine as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goode. All right, let's vote on the appointment of Mr. Macklin Holt to replace John Wesley Jones.
Appointment of Mr. Holt is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. 22 votes are entered. All 24 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? 17 affirmative votes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The second item on your agenda is the E911 board, Mr. Former Commissioner Paul De Frills was acting as a citizen. For the record, we pulled off the word citizen in committee, I pulled off this as well because that was inappropriately put. And the recommendation of the county executive was Commissioner Alan Draver to fill that place. It was unanimous, I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Echols. See no discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Ms. Chairman, the next item is Agriculture Extension Service Committee. Priscilla Curtis was recommended by the county executive to extend her two-year term. It was unanimous, so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, Mo Taylor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Frosty Gregory was also recommended for a continued two-year term by the county executive. It was unanimous, so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Ring. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Commissioner Mo Taylor was on Ag Commission and the county executive recommended to replace him with Commissioner Luke Tinsley. It was unanimous in the committee and I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor. Ms. Kruger, you're in the queue.
Well, he seconded it, so never mind.
I see no one else in the queue, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck, Mr. Tinsley. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Public Records Commission for the Archives Board, Baker Ring, is served, it was recommended by the county executive for a two-year term. It was unanimous, I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Echols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. There's a name on there named Jim Williams that was deferred, that's going to come back next month. Mike Honeycutt and Jerry Kirby were unanimously joint, combined, and... Mike Honeycutt and Jerry Kirby were unanimously joint, combined, and reappointments by the county executive, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goo, seconded by Commissioner Gomenden. Seen no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Elaine Gore from Gallatin, we're waiting on a recommendation from the city of Gallatin, so that is technically deferred. And as a recommendation and on your agenda for next month is the zoning board of appeals. Any recommendations can be made to the county executive? And that's it, Mr. Chairman, since I'm standing. Education has no report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goo. Mr. Graves, how are we?
No report, Mr. Chairman. We will be having a meeting this month, and there's a lot of potholes issues. I talked to Judy today about that, and she, they're going to do the best. They're having trouble getting asphalt.
Can you hit your microphone, Mr. Graves? I'm sorry.
Thought I was talking loud enough, but anyway.
Not for the internet.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, where was that? Potholes.
Potholes.
Lot of potholes in the county. Talked to Judy today, and she's going to, she's having a problem getting asphalt. This time of year is a hard time, too, also with the rain and the, no snow. But anyways, we're going to be talking about that and some other issues that she has concerns, maybe, in this coming meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Graves. Let's go to General Ops. Thank you, Ms. Sheil. Emergency Services, Ms. Kruger?
Do you want me to address? The question was earlier, or mentioned?
I think that'd be great.
Or Mayor Holt? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
We did not meet this last month, but in response to the request to add the discussion of the resignation of Ms. Lee and Mr. Wright from the 911 center, they are, they're actually controlled not by our committee. Our committee does not control that at all. It's the operations committee and executive committee, which are made up of totally different people, and there's no county commission on those. We are the funding body for that facility, or one of the many funding bodies of that facility, including with the municipalities that are a part of that. So while I'm aware of that situation and what's going on, that, we did not have a deciding factor in how that all played out, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Does that answer your questions?
I'm going to ask Ms. Dinnon to jump in, too, and give us some update.
That would be great, thank you, because that's not really us. Thank you.
At the resignation of the director and the assistant director, the operations committee recommended that we bring in Paul Harbsmeyer, who is a commander with the city of Hendersonville. He is working that job as well as the full-time job of running the organization along with four different backup people. They have already gone in, interviewed everyone. It's just been a complete excellent turnaround. They're also interviewing people that have left to see if they are interested in returning because they have already been trained. There has been no pause in services provided, and we believe, based on what we're hearing from the people themselves that are doing the work, that things are really on an uptick. And we're also getting ready to put out for a request, anyone interested in applying for the job. But in the meantime, Mr. Harbsmeyer is prepared to spend the next four to six months at sometimes sleeping at the facility, but dealing with addressing that.
Commissioner Mo Taylor?
Could I request that this body be sent information or noticed when there's, when those two boards meet?
Hang on, hang on one second. Hit it again, please, Ms. Dinnon. One more.
There it goes, there it goes.
The operations committee is just a body of the operational part of the committee. It is not a public body. It's the fire chiefs and the ambulance director and all of those people. The executive committee members, when their meeting is, it's usually the, what, is it the third Tuesday of the month? It is on the, it is on the website, but we can add it to that. We can try to have that sent out. But like, there, it's not, we're just a member of this board. We're not the one that controls it. The mayor of Gallatin is presently the chairman of that committee.
So if we could get the notice and maybe the agendas?
The agendas, I don't have any control over. When I get notice of the minutes or the meeting, I'll be glad to send it out. But like I said, it's not something that I call, so I'm...
Ms. Kruger?
I just wanted to add to what she said, that I have spoken to several people at the 911 center, and they are all, everyone I've spoken to is thrilled with the outcome. And Commander Harbsmeyer has been there along with the four or five people that are backing him up. They've been there nonstop and working, like she said, sleeping over there, showing up at three in the morning, seven in the morning, 11 at night, and all working full-time jobs. And there are other positions within emergency services in the municipalities as well, and some within the county. And not asking for any additional pay for what they're doing so far. Well, that's a good thing. We probably should give him a little extra. I'm not going to deny that. But they've not been like asking for it, and we've certainly up to this point not officially given them any additional pay or anything. So they're volunteering their time to make it a better situation, and I'm very, very grateful. And I think that we all should be, show our gratitude for them turning it around, and it looks like it's going to turn around well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kruger. Commissioner Graves?
Just got a short question, believe it or not. Who does the hiring for these positions?
Let's go back to the county attorney. Ms. Dinnon, if you can hit your microphone.
The director of the ECC does the hiring, and presently, that's Mr. Harbsmeyer. And the different people from the cities that are assisting him in running the organization.
So the county commission doesn't have any?
Who hires the director?
No. The director will be, the executive committee, which is made up of the mayors and the county executive, will be the one that will hire the new person.
The county commission does fund that position?
Twenty-eight percent of that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Mr. Mansfield?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, Ms. Dinnon, you might know, as far as, you know, only information I've had from this is just reading the papers. And so it just, one thing that stood out to me as far as like retention of employees and exit interviews, is there, is that something that we can kind of find, learn more about through these executive committees or their minutes of, like, I know they said it takes a year to train one person. So do you know by any chance how many people have been retained? Or is there a large gap? I know there's 30 people that quit. I think 27 said it was a volatile and hostile situation there, like, as far as what type of work environment that we're able to retain some of these people so they're not having to keep incurring costs on training? Do you happen to know those types of questions or answers?
We're going to go to Commissioner Chris Taylor on this.
Jeremy, one of the things that might help, for the past year and a half, Ron has had to come to the emergency services board and give an update each time, especially since the center opened, on hiring, where they were at as far as staffing, overtime, things like that. The best place, I would say, for just hard numbers would be to go back through all the minutes of the emergency services board for at least the past year and a half that I can think of, maybe a little bit longer, but, because she would routinely report to us. And then maybe look at the budget minutes from the workshops last year, the 2018 ones, because I know we discussed with her then, retention of employees, salaries and things like that. And it might have come up again the previous year, too, with her on the budget workshops. As far as just general information, that's probably the best place to go get it as far as the county commission's interaction and our responsibilities for that board.
Okay, I'm going to go to the county attorney also for this.
I spoke with Mr. Harbsmeyer on Friday. There are five, presently five openings, and it is their goal to try to go back and get some of those people that had previously quit to come back into those positions they were already interviewing. They have capacity for 46 people, and that is their, right now, they have 41. And that is their goal, to get those, to try to get already trained people back.
Okay, great.
But, and, you know, any other thing else that you're interested in, just give our office a call, and we can send you things that we have that's public.
Definitely be interested in kind of the minutes or the notices, kind of like Commissioner Taylor requests, or just anything that we might just have a little bit more.
Okay.
Peripheral, 30,000-foot view on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Ms. Kruger, did you have anything else for emergency services?
No.
Okay.
No, nothing else this time. Those operations meetings, I think...
Are actually published online when they're called.
We'll get them and send them out.
Yeah, and I think some of the meetings are actually closed meetings, not the operations, but maybe the executive, or the other way around. No?
Operations.
Oh, closed, okay. All right. On the county website.
We'll get them and send them out. There are not that many of them.
Okay, let's go to legislative committee. Mr. Ring? Push your button, Mr. Ring.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing to vote on from that legislative committee is Resolution 1901-2, a resolution encouraging the state of Tennessee to remedy online sales tax collections with an equitable distribution of revenues collected based upon a prorated percentage of the population of the unincorporated versus incorporated population of the county, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Chris Taylor?
Thank you. As I understand it, Mr. Chairman, state law is kind of antiquated on distribution of sales tax revenues. With the increase in online tax receipts, they're using basically the same formula they had when it was brick-and-mortar stores. And so because of that, we are hoping that the state will change the formula so that the revenues will actually go back to the places where they came from, not just where the brick-and-mortar stores are.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Ring. I see no one else in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And nothing else, your chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. Mr. Becker, financial management?
Yes, the financial management committee met at its regularly scheduled meeting this evening. One thing to report, we got some really positive news on the, concerning the bond that was just issued on January the 24th. There was projections back in late October about the, basically the total cost of the bond. And then when we actually issued it on the 24th, there's a savings, if you will, for the total amount of $8.4 million. And so we got, the S&amp;P Global Rating came back as a double A+, it's stable, so it's great news as well. And I've asked Mr. Long to, during this meeting next month, to put together a short presentation material or whatnot to explain it a lot more thoroughly, so, but just wanted to share that good news.
Great, that's great. Thank you, Mr. Becker. I appreciate that news. Let's go to budget. Commissioner Chris Taylor?
Yes, sir. Real quick, along those same lines, Mr. Long is going to also present next month an overview of all of our amortizations of the various bonds.
Hang on one second, Mr. Taylor.
Ah, I feel good, Mr. Kemp. That wasn't me for once. Mr. Long is also next month going to present, in as simple a form as he can, the amortization of all the bonds we have as a county. So that way, everybody will kind of understand. And it's, when I say simple, it's so I understand it. But that way, we all know exactly what we have, what we owe, and when it'll be paid off, when we can accrue more debt, and how it kind of works. So I know, all right, first one, make a motion for 1901-43. This is appropriating $22,500 from County General Unassigned Fund Balance for the connectivity between the county buildings and IT. And if you're not familiar, one of the issues we have with using munis and any of the other network or any of the other functions within the county government is that we don't have a network overall that connects all the departments together. We never have. Dennis is doing a fantastic job stringing it together, but we need to get him some money so he can start making bigger strides on it, and that's what this is for, so.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Ring. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Taylor?
All right, the next one is 1901-04. This is appropriating $84,360.38 for reimbursement for the state inmate medical bills to the sheriff's office. It's one of those, we don't really have a choice, we have to pay it, so.
Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Goo. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. 1901-05. This is appropriating $29,445.39 for reimbursement for the state inmate medical bills. Again, one of those things we kind of have to do.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Goo. See no one else in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
This one is the one we added from Mr. Taylor. It's 1901-11. And what this is, is, make sure I write, it's appropriating $5,991 from County General Unassigned Fund Balance for salary increase and benefits for the planning and stormwater department director, Josh Sudus. The reason I'll say this, this initially came up on the planning commission by them, and what we wanted to do was, the number was $10,000 to give him a raise. It's halfway through the year, so it'd be that much as prorated for the rest of this year with his benefits. And I'll make it really quick, but he's a huge blessing to our county. Since he's been on there, and it's six months, the other members of the planning commission have told me, and those are men that have been there for several years, that they've learned more in the six months than they ever have before. I invite everybody to come to one of those meetings. It's amazing, because the meeting's at 5:00, but he does a workshop every single time at 4:00, where he's teaching us about different parts of the regulations, how we should approach changing them, different options we have. And he's already rewriting everything we need to and setting it up so that we understand how it works, but not in a way that just throws it completely on the county at one time. He's implementing in a way that is acceptable to everybody. And it's not just to benefit the county. He's made it easier for builders, that are local builders, to come in and do things. In fact, we've invited outside builders, all kinds of people, to come to these different meetings, and the only feedback I ever get is always positive, just about how amazing he is to work with, the leaps and bounds we're making as far as the department. The reason the whole information came up about Somerset Downs, and that was because of Josh, because they go out and they walk everything, and they're trying to, he's trying to set it up where we can have an engineer, where we can have long-term planning, where we can have other inspectors. He's trying to do it where it's cost neutral. He does an amazing, amazing job. And as, I will quote Mr. Kemp on this, he's easy on the eyes, too, so. But that's why we're wanting to do it. Well, you said somewhat along those lines.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Mo Taylor, you're in the queue.
Yeah, I'd asked for this to be pulled off because I was asked to pull it off by constituents. The reason is nothing, it's nothing personal, and I echo what you said. I've had a tremendously positive experience working with this office since he arrived. And it's not that I don't feel that he's deserving, but it's the precedence that this sets, this close to the new budget process. I've been on budget before, and I can recall two or three of these similar like that. And I voted for him, and I got lit up. So not willing to, I'm not opposed to the work he's doing or opposed to the salary increase. I'm opposed to the precedence that it sets this close to the next budget cycle. So I'll be abstaining with gratitude for all his hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Commissioner Driver?
I just want to, I guess, reiterate some of what was said, and also say that a meeting with this young man, a lot of the concerns that we have been voting on with these developments and stuffs over the last four, five, six years are things that we have had to address, are things that he's trying to work on ahead of time. Exactly the things that our folks out in the county have been asking us to work on, he is working on. I'll also go ahead and say, he doesn't have near enough resources in his department to do all the things that need to be done. But I just have to say, we need to support this.
Mr. Gomenden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been on the planning commission for, I think, five years now. And I do know that probably, I think Josh came along about six or eight months ago, July, maybe something like that. But had the situation went on as it was going, I say by September, we wouldn't have had a planning commission. And it is very important, we had maybe three or four years ago, we would even have a month that we didn't even have a planning commission meeting because there wasn't anything on the agenda. the agenda. Now the agenda is very full, and I understand that maybe even in the next two months, we have as many as four, 500 lots that are coming before our planning commission. And we've had subdivision regulations, we've had zoning regulations that are very outdated, and we've had very many problems with them, fire hydrants, just all kinds of different problems. Developers were coming in and asking for a three-lot subdivision or four-lot subdivision, and then just soon as they got those built, they were coming in and adding three or four more lots. First thing you know, you had a 20-lot subdivision with no planning. We weren't doing any planning. But since Josh has got here, the planning commission knows, we know what we're doing now. And he has a presentation every month at the planning commission of every development. The developers know what they're doing. They know what they're expected to do. The surveyors know what they're expected to do. The engineers know what they're expected to do. And it's, it's slowly becoming, everybody's doing what they're expected to do, and it makes it so much easier and so much better. And hopefully, we're beginning to stay off of the Channel 2 news with drainage problems. And just like this one that came up tonight, that was something that should have been taken care of two, three years ago, and, and wasn't. And so I don't know exactly where this request came from, but I do know, well, I know where it came from, but I don't know why. But I do know that we certainly can't afford to lose this young man. And he's already reworked the subdivision regulations, the zoning regulations, and some of those are coming up next month, or maybe at least in March, for the county commission to approve. There'll be public hearings. And getting us in, you know, the problems that we're having now are not like the problems that we had 20 years ago. They're, they're different ones. And I'm certainly all for this.
Thank you, Mr. Gammenden. Commissioner Graves.
Ms. Chairman, I just, I want to commend Mr. South for coming in, taking, taking everything by the reins and moving forward. When I was on the planning commission, he had come in and set up these presentations. It's a lot easier to understand. You know where you're at. And on the side, I'm not on the planning commission now, but I talk to Josh quite often about, out in my district, or somebody calls in another district. Also, he's very helpful with me. He's talked to me in some situations. There's a subdivision out in Side View area that had some problems. I think we went a long ways to correct that problem with the, with the help of Mr. South. Retention pond, some of those things kind of got, I don't know, it kind of got swept under the rug. I don't know how it did, but it was under that rug. And with the help of Mr. South and some more, we won't have hardly as many complaints. There may be still one constituent of mine that might complain a little, but I'm not mentioning that name. But, but we have probably helped this situation probably 90%. So there you go. And I just want to thank Mr. South, and I want to work with him as commissioner. He'll, he'll contact me, call me back. Of course, we lose signal sometimes, and, but anyway, I just want to thank him.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Commissioner Kruger.
I personally can't speak highly enough about what he's done, just in seeing tonight what we had before us with the subdivision and the drainage issues, because that's something that came up three years ago. And we spent over a year discussing, figuring out what to do and how to stop the additional problems that those detention ponds were causing or not, not helping, anyway. And the fact that he's been here this amount of time and has already got that on the board, and we're already taking care of that, is huge to me. And that's just one of the many things that I've seen him do. The other thing is, I think we all need to remember, when we don't pay for the services we're receiving from one of our employees, that that employee can find another county that will pay for their services. And I don't think that's what we want to do. I mean, we've been through that with several departments already, where we were basically training people to go to work for Williamson, Rutherford, Wilson, you name the county. We were training all of our emergency workers to go work there. We were training people from every department to go work for another county. And that's more expensive than a $5,000 pay raise, I feel like. So I am in full support of this, and I appreciate his service, and I appreciate all he has already done to get ahead of what we have been trying to accomplish for the last couple of years, and he's just on it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Mr. Hinton.
Let me ask this question, and I'm not trying to pry. Did this gentleman start working for Sumner County at the salary that the previous person in this position was earning at the time?
Yes, sir.
So he's, he start, so this is, this is above what the previous, okay, that's okay. Well, now, I had one more note. I think I lost a good friend under the previous director because I come down here at a meeting one night, and, and we had somebody that was here that had one of those 30-lot subdivisions, and he come down here and asked for permission to build four houses, and said that he had, the road department had signed off on it, and a few other odds and ends, and the water was adequate, but he didn't have any of the documentation. So he and I had kind of a run-in that night. But if, if that, if, if what we've got going now is stopping those kind of situations, if we're ready to have all the facts when the meeting comes apart, then you keep down personal animosity and debate, you just go by what's on the paper. It either is a yes, or it is a no. And if this young man has got that, to that place, we can't pay him enough compared to what we were putting up with, and I call for the question.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mr. Hinton called for the question. Let's vote on the question. Actually, Mr. Goode dropped out of the queue, so there's no one else in the queue. So let's vote.
We're voting on Resolution 1901-11. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Mr. South has not only got a great vote, he got quite a compliment from Mr. Kemp.
Receiving 23 affirmative votes, the resolution is approved on first and final reading.
Passed unanimously, with one extension.
Misquoted.
And Mr. Kemp was misquoted. Michelle has an announcement.
Real quick, I just wanted to announce, today, we had our joint school board and county commission luncheon at Madison Creek Elementary. Was a huge success. Next month, we are going to Station Camp High School. Their CDC class operates what's called Camp Grill, where they actually prepare and serve the meal. And so I believe the menu is taco soup, so it is a really good choice, if you would like to join us. If you will mark on your calendars, because of the way that this one is set up, it's not a typical cafeteria style, we do have to have an RSVP so that they know how much to prepare. So I have to have an RSVP by February the 20th. I'll send out an email reminder as well. The luncheon is February 27th. It's a Wednesday afternoon at 11 o'clock.
Okay.
So that's it.
Michelle, did you have, did you have a motion?
To adjourn. Yes.
Who has the most contact with the Archives?